Yeah, that's right.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, you okay? We'll call it to work. The council work session, Monday, June the seventeenth. We have two pieces of old business which are related to the tagling of the McKinney cabins. In your packet, I believe, there is a letter from Tom McKinney. He talks about one at ninety-three eighty-six, but he does not address the other one. Now Wayne seems to remember that they said that they would knock the other one down, but this one they want to take apart piece by piece. I've asked Doug to get back to the McKinneys tomorrow and tell us what you're going to do with the other ones as well, because this only addresses one of them. One of the things you're going to have to consider is whether or not you want to allow them to continue on until Labor Day as opposed to, it's normally thirty days after you publish. It takes us thirty days to be able to get busy and get stuff done, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
So anyway, they did say what they were going to do, they're going to take it apart by hand. I don't know if you want to leave a chimney standing there, which is what they're suggesting.
It wouldn't be the first one. They all fall down eventually.
And such chimneys are common through all of this.
They are, they really are.
There's not a shortage.
Is there anyone that can take a look at it and tell us what they're saying about it? You know, just to be sure that there's no issue with it.
The chimney itself or the structure?
Yeah, or if they're going to leave it.
Unless it falls down in the process of deconstruction.
So anyway, please read this.
They've done nothing in the last thirty days, just sat.
Doug, I could take an inspector out there, put a level on it, see if it looks safe and straight.
Okay.
Check the order. Take some photos and.
Yep, okay.
They've done nothing in this last thirty days, anything, nothing at all.
They were supposed to.
One letter, some yellow tape that won't hold anybody out.
The yellow tape was ready.
Now, will we, Jason, next Monday, have another public hearing?
No.
No?
That's done.
Okay, so we'll just have our discussion and.
Up or down.
Okay, great, thank you.
Or if you think you want to table till September.
You can, make sure you understand this, you may have a question of these people. If they're here, you can request them to come up.
Sure.
At the point of personal improvement, technical answer question, it's not a public hearing, it's not that kind of time here, I mean, it's just you can ask a question to assist you.
Great, thank you.
Any questions at all? So Doug, once you find out about the chimney and what they're going to do with the other cabin, would you send that in here?
Sure.
The next is more housekeeping for the three advisory board. Cheryl Hall, Mike Aden, Chuck Woods have all agreed to another three-year term. And then the last two actually are together. It seems that the naming of the trails as eleven under might have been a little pasty by Gary Brennan over at the Walter Family Foundation. It's now down to nine.
Just like the Big Ten.
They found some underground utilities, one in particular, Cooper, cost millions to move. It's an underground fiber optic pole. And so they're going to go and add that one, where's the other one? I think it's at the Highlands?
Highlands Road.
Yeah. They are not going to put another one there either, they're going to put it over. So the first one talks about adding on roughly forty-three thousand dollars so that they can put the above ground. And then the second one is the change order taking out the two tunnels. So the difference is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars to change down.
So it doesn't make sense to move it laterally to miss the.
Oh, they looked everywhere.
They did.
It just wasn't going to work. And of course, they're putting one on Chelsea now.
Uh huh.
And that's it.
So, I'm sorry, what streets were these issued?
Cooper almost down to three-fourths, just up there.
Then where they were drilling by the river. Is that where they were drilling? There was a drilling crew.
Just west of there. Yeah, just west. It's up a hundred feet.
Just west of that.
So Cooper.
Just by, almost by three-fourth.
Yeah, and the other was up on Highlands, on Highlands.
I mean, there's a lot of traffic to you right now.
Yeah. So they even went to bridges and that was where we were.
So net decrease in cost, and so the city council will approve that. Will there be some offsetting increase in cost with regard to signage?
Right there, so the forty-two nine.
Yeah.
Is putting in the above ground and the signage and everything else.
Okay.
So the net between the two is a hundred and thirty-nine.
And that's all from Bayou?
Yes.
So what happens to that hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars then?
Well, we'll keep them because there may be more change orders coming up.
Okay.
And the nice thing is, they very kindly said, you know, we can earn interest on money, so we're even at four hundred dollars now. Okay, let's move into the discussion. First, let's hear the trails laws I wanted to hear. So there are a number of questions, sir. This gentleman is from the Trailblazers organization, and it has to do with the, I guess, the sprucing up of the trails in Long Houston.
Some of them are pretty close to the road, and when they're coming out of the trees, you've got a ramp that gets them to go back into trees. And you don't have a whole lot of visual clearance for drivers. Somebody's going to come shooting out of them trees and just catch something out of the corner of their eye, may think it's a deer, and who knows what they're going to do, because you're into the right of way. And you're coming right at the car at a forty-five degree angle. You do that twice, I'm using this as your new part. You know, it's happened a few, but I know it's there because of the Monette Road all the time. But someone who doesn't drive that very often, somebody coming out of there at speed, and some of the guys know what they're doing, so they come a little quicker, you come out of them trees out of nowhere, and bingo, here's a bike, you're not going to realize what it is, you may think it's a deer, and that driver could just go crazy because they don't pay real much attention anyhow. You do that twice on Houston. Then at the bottom of the hill, on Reardon, it isn't open yet, but people are using it. Bottom of the hill on Reardon, you come down the hill, make a couple of little jogs, and bingo, you're right there, you're less than four or five feet from the trees to the road. So you won't see anybody until they literally stick their bike out there, no matter how many signs you put up, because you've got all these flashing lights anyhow, and nobody buys them because they come on so early and they stay on so late, and you never see a bike. So your lights are wonderful, but hardly anybody's buying them, especially if you're little up there and they're coming and going all the time. But the one at the bottom of Reardon, I would be more worried about than the ones on Houston, but they're not right, you know, there's something about just how close they are to the road, because they're literally in the right of way. They're just too close to the road with what you've got them doing. What if somebody misses the ramp there, doesn't make the turn, then they're in the street.
So Houston, we've already moved some of those back further away from the roads.
No, you haven't. Not since you put them in.
Yes, sir.
I go there every day. You put a little bit, narrow strip of grass in there, but I still think they're too close to the road, period.
And then the crossing at the bottom of Reardon, we're moving that one further east to add additional sideline clearances. Would have also hired a contractor to go in and do some tree pruning and clearing to clear additional sidelines.
That may help, but I'd like to wait until I see it, because I did that kind of work for, and I didn't build trails, I took care of accidents for a long time. I see how people drive here and we're not getting any better, whether we're youngsters or oldsters. You just got to have, you can't, and like I said, the flashing lights, you know, they're either too sensitive or whatever, and them lights flash all the time, and there's no way to be found. Nobody to be found.
Maybe we can get the ten under if this savings will pay for a bridge under Reardon.
You know, there was one point.
Yeah, I know.
Well, they don't have a lot of place to even put the bridge, they have to go into the side of the hill.
Not the bridge.
You're going to run into major oxes anyway.
There is originally.
Every time it rains, it's water.
There was a box covered.
Yep.
If you move it, they do something with the sidelines, you know, that may help. But I'm real there of it now.
The other concern I had on Houston is this, that's new stretch, looks like it's for like really experienced bikers. And there's two places where, and I'm looking at it from the other side, from the drivers, where they come out of the woods and they go up this ramp thing, and if they don't make that turn.
That's what I'm talking about, Linda, that's it.
I know, but I'm looking at it from the bikers.
I said the same thing, if they miss the turn, I just said that, if they miss the turn, they're in the street.
And that just looks like a really bad accident, because I think there's going to be a lot of bikers, kids, who think they can do it and find out too late that they can't. So, because if they come off that ramp wrong, there's nothing anybody can do except have a, be in a car. And I was wondering why it was designed that way, perhaps?
So on all the jumps and everything, there's always the option, there's an alternate on that entire section of trails to go around all those jumps.
Yeah, I saw that.
So that's partly one thing that we do to help those to bring skill level down so younger riders and less skilled level riders can ride on it.
I could put a black diamond sign there at either end, if they want to take that more advanced.
We've talked about getting some drop signs and stuff, that trail's not considered a black diamond trail, because there is pulgance for everything, so nothing mandatory which we require a black diamond. So we haven't done that, but we're looking at adding, showing that if there's an actual drop or something like that to alert the cyclists before they get on it and know their skill level.
Does that thing really looks like it would be dangerous even if there were no road there?
So do you want to go back and just chat there and about the input?
Yeah, I can. We've talked with the original trail builder as well, because they're the ones who designed and laid out that section of trail.
The people who did the stonework did a great, great job. Visually, it looks great, however, concerned.
It was a good, good, we got there, so we manually trimmed the grass.
Wanted to add also that I've gotten feedback on the Houston road, that when people first saw it, they thought it was really close to the road. So I just want to ask a question about process. So as the design is happening, and I understand it happens in the field at times, at some point, isn't there kind of a check against right of ways and that kind of thing, so that the contractor who's building that trail doesn't encroach on a setback from the road, so that we don't get into this situation again, hey, it's too close to the road, it's got to be one way.
I think part of their problem is they've got to use the right of way because they don't have easements across the private lots and maybe along the street, so.
Well, there's no.
So you see some of those that are like along Chelsea, for example, or on that side, there's a reason they're actually in the right of way. They may have the easement over there and over here, they've got to get between two places.
I understand that for a path, I don't understand that for a stack of rock. That's where I think if we're going to go construct something there, then we're not, I don't think the contractor is entitled to go as far close to the road as they care to. So how do we keep them from doing that again in the future?
Just knowing that there is some sort of deal, it's where we have built structure and you need to go check with the right of way division or whoever.
The tunnel right beside you?
Yeah. Check with Doug.
Right.
Or anyone of those other guys.
And this wasn't even construction of new trail, this was kind of a revision to an existing trail.
Yes, it was trying to pull more of the riders to stay on the trail versus getting out in the road. A lot of them were finding that it wasn't a very exciting trail, and it was just kind of connecting point A, point B, well, if it was the same case, then they just decided they'd hop on the road.
Get there quicker.
Yeah.
I understand that, and I'm totally okay with all that. The part that I'm concerned about is the process that goes into building a rock wall very close to the road, I think. Not only is it, not only is it a problem for the bike, for the cyclist, but it's a problem for people who travel those roads, might be. Like to know that there's a process, that the city gets an opportunity to look at something and say, that's outside of the right of way, that won't be a problem for us.
Is it outside of the right of way?
Those, I don't know, like with the right of way right there.
Rock walls are in.
They're in the right of way.
You should brush off to cut the grass before you just go back to that, with a hand hill trimmer.
Rock walls are about eight to 10 feet off the vacant edge.
And the right of way is what, six feet?
It's longer than that, or Houston is probably eighty, could be a hundred. It's wider up in Houston.
I'm not sure.
And that in and of itself may be an indication that we really need for you guys to be very well-versed on that kind of stuff, and to let those kinds of, these kinds of situations happen, because it's only, it's bad for everybody when you guys have to redo something. So just get it right the first time, I'm sure that's an important, best interest.
Isn't the paved one going on the other side of the street?
Yes, sir.
So you're going to have things going real close to the road on both sides?
I don't know if the pavement's going that close to the road.
There's no place else to put it? You've got to keep it out of the golf course?
Because there's, the water runs pretty thick through there.
Some places it'll be five, 10 feet off, some places it will be forty, fifty feet, it just varies.
One concern would be on some of those major arteries like Houston and Anchester, that if you get too close to the road, the widening is going to be costly in the future, so it's important for those larger designated streets to stay farther away from the edge of the town.
Thinking someday we might change Houston into a four lane?
Well, not a four, but you might have a three. Not my luck, because of all the turning movements that are there, all the streets, there aren't any streets off Houston.
Which is just a question point of information, I was told that at those crosses, those special crosses, which I kind of like, I think they're good, that the bikers and walkers actually yield to the automobiles.
Correct.
Supposed to.
That's what it's supposed to work. I mean, most of the times I've been around, the automobiles are appropriately cautious.
And sometimes.
Sometimes even yielding, which is fine by me, but I like those. I know sometimes they go off because of an animal or something, but I've been pretty impressed with them.
All right.
Thanks for what you do.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I don't think so. Thanks for listening to us.
We're fine. And I'll talk to Aaron about, when he comes back on Wednesday.
Okay. What's her name?
Daniel.
Daniel.
Yep, Trailblazers. Aaron Rush, he's my boss. He would have been here, but he was.
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you, sir. See you. Okay. Let's look up the, Steve, or, removing meeting rules from city ordinances.
Yeah, I continue to kind of want to review our rules, I still think there's some adjustments that need to be made, but one that we talked about last time is taking the rules out of city ordinances so that they are not, you know, subject to the same kind of requirements that we might put around a city law. Rule meetings, I think ought to be more flexible than that, I think they are at the, at this board's, this council's kind of preferences for how we run those meetings, and so we recently had a change to one of the city ordinances. And I just, I don't think it's necessary for us to make a simple change to our meeting rules and have to treat it as though it's a city ordinance or law. So Jason had made some comments last time that this came up, and before I maybe ask Jason to kind of recap what that looks like, how we get them out of the city ordinances, because many other cities don't do it that way, I would just call to your attention that if you go to that part of the city ordinances today, it's completely misstructured, it's not communicated properly, it does not reflect the way we run meetings today. So for us to point to this and say, well, this has to change, if we're going to make a change to meetings, it doesn't really make any sense, because the meetings don't follow this structure as it's laid out in the city ordinances today. It must change, and at the same time, I would say, let's make the change so that it comes out of city ordinances, and it's just a matter for this city council to determine what the rules, what the procedures will be for our meetings going forward.
Would it be appropriate to decodify them and put them in a formal resolution?
That's what we could do, that's exactly what happens, they would adopt a new, you know, even if you didn't change any of your rules, which you can change your rules, of course, you would just adopt them through resolution. And by reference, rule one, rule two, rule three, on through, you wouldn't have to do anything different than the way you do it in the past, I'm just guessing there's nothing wrong with that, but then at the same time, you would repeal the ordinance. And we would just need to make sure that we, it gets a little, you want to make sure you've done it timing-wise correctly, resolutions become effective immediately, and so what we would have to say in those resolu, in that proposed new set of rule resolutions, that they would become the applicable rules upon the effective date of the repeal of the ordinance or set of the rules. And so you could, if you want, put an emergency clause on the repeal, so that it will become immediately effective upon publication, and then so your resolution will become effective immediately. You don't have to do that. You could adopt your repeal resolution like you normally do, take three readings, you could take three months, you could not put an emergency clause on it, and it would be sixty days after adoption, or your new resolution rules will become effective. We lawyers can make everything really difficult. If you tell me that you have a desire, let's just put the rules in a resolution, make it work as quickly as we can, just get that done, what I would suggest to you is adopt the resolution, the ordinance that would repeal the existing rules would, I would suggest we put an emergency clause on that, just to clear, that's clarity, procedural part of the rules is critical, you can do it anything, which is obviously critical to health, safety of your populace, so we would do that. You can have all that done on one agenda and get it done that way. Obviously, if you want to talk, if you want to open it up and talk about the rules and whether we ought to do something differently, whether we want to talk about having, doing a consent agenda or something maybe a little bit different than what we do now, then obviously the time to look at that would be in review of this resolution, adopting rules, but you don't have to change anything. So you could always change, convert your rules to resolution without really changing anything, and two months later, change that again to make a procedural change to make the meetings.
I think at every city council meeting I've attended, there's been a motion to suspend the rules and make a change on the fly. We do that routinely with regard to the readings of the resolutions or the ordinances by title only. So that happens at every meeting, that tells me, you know, rules are there to be followed, there's exceptions to every rules, but if we're having an exception to it every time, we ought to make an adjustment in that rule.
Well, as to that, that's a state law requirement. So the state law says that we have to read proposed ordinances in full three times on three different days unless the council suspends the rules.
Fair enough.
So we, that, we would, unless, if we don't do that, then the mayor's got to, or I or someone's got to read word for word that whole ordinance.
Fair enough, fair enough. And so I don't object to that one in particular, I'm using that as an example, that we do suspend the rules in every meeting that we participate in. I think, I think some of the things that I look for going forward, obviously, we've already talked about the ability of the city council to respond to the public input session. Where are we on that, timing-wise, by the way?
Two or three. No, you adopt it. You adopt it.
I think it's effective with the July meetings.
Okay, I apologize.
Is it sixty days after?
Sixty days after publication.
So we.
So your July regular meeting.
It's effective.
Okay, July, so in the June meeting, I feel like as a city council, since we've all agreed to approve that change, that if anybody feels the need to so respond to the public input, that a motion to that effect would be appropriate and support for it would be appropriate as well.
For what?
For response to the public input.
In the June meeting?
In the June meeting, yes. Given that we've already, as a council, decided that that's going to be the rule of the future, that rather than waiting for the sixty days, if somebody feels in this meeting, it may or may not happen, but if anybody has the desire.
I don't know if we can move a rule.
You can, with a motion.
You can suspend the rules and allow a response to, you can suspend the rules and allow someone to talk for five minutes if you want to, and we've done that kind of thing in the past. So you can move to suspend the rules and to authorize a response, period, by the council after the public participation if you want, at any time, it wouldn't be necessary starting in July.
Okay, so does anybody have any thoughts about moving the rules out of an ordinance into a resolution?
It gives us more flexibility.
It makes them easier to adjust if we choose to do so. And we could probably have to do some adjustments.
Yes. So what, I talked to Steve about this, I can't get all that done by Monday, so it'll probably be something you'll see for the July meeting, but I will give you, Steve, and make sure it's what you want, because you're proposing this, and then, and if anything else, you can amend and vote, do it however you want to do it.
So we made the change in response to public comment, right? That's what this is all about. I think there was some conversation too about at the beginning of the meeting, rather than wrapping it up so quickly right here, giving the council an opportunity, if they would like to bring up point of business, or if they had something that they wanted to talk about or discuss.
Your agenda is the agenda for the meeting, and you have access to the agenda, you know, to put anything on there. You only act through ordinances and resolutions, and so if you want the council to take action on something, then you have to propose a resolution or an ordinance for the council to vote on to accomplish that. If you're talking about, we just want to have an open, you know, free, this is the open free-for-all period discussion, work session. If you want to have the rules say that at the end of the items on the agenda, there shall be a period of whatever you want to call it, you can do that, but there would not be anything acted upon, because there would be no order.
I understand that.
Do anything. You also have the right to suspend the rules and to offer a new resolution or an ordinance at the meeting for consideration at that meeting, you have to get a suspension of the rules to authorize it to be considered at that meeting. And you've done that to add an item at the actual regular session.
Can you do that at the beginning of the meeting?
Do it whenever you want to move to suspend the rules.
So Jason, does the term new business necessarily suggest that there's something that needs to be acted on, or could it be, there's new business for conversation purposes, something that we may, we may see.
Because there's additional business.
Yeah. It's new business, though, right? We haven't discussed.
But there is no business to vote on.
Right.
You're just voting, so.
Fair enough.
But you're not voting, we're not even saying.
Let me, when the legislature or Congress gets together and they're sitting there and they're talking, they have a proposed bill that they're talking about, they, I mean, unless it's just a period of where they can talk about anything they want to, I guess they do that in that period, they can do that as well, but what is, if there's additional business, my question being, so you would, you're saying that there's going to be another resolution or ordinance to add to the agenda?
Not necessarily. I'll give you an example of what I'm thinking about, Doug, maybe you're thinking about something else, but for example, I think from time to time, if, you know, one of the objectives that I have here is to make, as a city council, I want to encourage us to be more engaged, to be more responsive to the citizens. One way to do that is if we have, from time to time, there's a lot of activity that takes place in Bella Vista, from time to time, we may want to recognize something. I'll give you a good example for this next meeting. We just had the Bella Vista Foundation put on a charity golf tournament here, and it was really well organized.
There is a period of announcements at the close of the meeting.
Okay, okay.
You could use that for that purpose. That's already.
Recognizations, announcements, but what we need is, we need to say, here are the announcements that are on the record, are there any other announcements?
So one thing you could, is if you know you're going to want to make particular announcements, you might let Wayne know so he can put that on the agenda as a particular announcement. And then, you know, the mayor could ask, are there any other announcements, if not, or adjourned, right? And then by rule, you're adjourned, you don't have to vote to adjourn, so. You could do that with any existing framework, but if you want to say, I want to talk about water, that's not really an announcement. And so unless there's an item of business that the council would be voting on and debating, because you are debating proposed ordinances and resolutions, then really this is the form to do that, and then that could bring forth a resolution or an ordinance that could be fully debated during the meeting. But there's always, I mean, at least at this point, we talk about it. But in terms of announcement, I just don't know of a mechanism to debate ordinances, potential ordinances or resolutions which are not yet on the agenda within the current, within the way it's done. within the way it's done. Again, you could, you set your own rules. So you could have a period on the regular agenda that could be a free-for-all, but I would warn you, what is the point of a free-for-all?
Okay? Yeah, you okay?
If you tell me what it is you want to do, then maybe we can develop a rule to do that. But it sounds like, we just need a period of time where we can just kind of talk about what we didn't say before, or what we're thinking about doing in the future, or that, that's not really, your regular session is not the time to do that. This is the place to do that. This is the form.
Fair enough. Given the, I think, the occasion to make a recognition for any member of the city council to recognize an event or a group or somebody, somebody that's done something.
You could change it to announcements and recognition.
Yes.
You could just change the title. And you can, you could say, well, in my ward, there's going to be a special meeting, I'm going to have my constituents at 3:00 on Saturday. And just invite everybody to come and so and so.
Very good.
Or if we have a new Eagle Scout in the community, I'd ask him to come today.
Exactly.
And here's John Doe, our new Eagle Scout, and just want to recognize him and thank you. That kind of stuff.
Absolutely. So, yes. Well done. Okay, and then I think we're approaching the end, and one topic that you mentioned, I think, just as a side, is water. And water's not on our agenda today, and so I think, can we just reframe kind of where we're at and what's next?
You can talk about water, go ahead down.
Okay, all right.
So you're next.
Okay, super. So we have a special session on water, and so we've got an important decision in front of us with regard to this proposition of acquiring a fragment of a water system that Centerton has for sale. And so I had a task in our last work session that I would meet with the associate from Raymond James, and we would take a meeting with the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission, who is a source of funding for water propositions of our kind. And I think, you know, to report back on that, I'm happy to do that by way of a few comments tonight, but then I think we want to keep this on track and let's drive to a decision either for or against this water proposition. I think that's kind of looming out there. I think everybody needs, Centerton needs our direction. I think the residents of Belavista will want our direction. We have to make our minds up with regard to that. In speaking to these parties about financing, there was no magic bullet. I think one of the things we were interested in was federal-level financing that would offer us the same protection against an outside agency coming in and kind of, again, fragmenting the water system, making a case for part of that ought to be in their, ought to be a part of their city water system. We don't qualify for those federal-level loans, so we would not have that protection. Here, we don't have a big investment, a huge investment to make in terms of acquiring the fragment, but it's the investment that would be necessary in order for us to really fully leverage this water system to the benefit of Belavista in the future. That does require significant investment. And again, because of the prerequisites for the federal-level funding, which have to do with being underserved and trying to bring water to low-income areas, we do not qualify for that type of funding. The state would be interested in loaning money to us, but we wouldn't know for sure if we qualify there until we apply. So if there's a bit of a chicken and egg there, where you have to apply for a loan to figure out whether you qualify or not. So there are funding options available. You know, I appreciate Doug make some really good comments on, we, part of our charge as members of this council ought to be to look forward into what are the various funding, city fund, city revenues that might be available to us, where do we find those, how many opportunities are there for those? There aren't a lot, obviously. This might be one. It's pretty far out there in the future. You really have to have a lot of faith in a process, and you have to be ready to invest additional funds. So I think, when I think about kind of what are the, what's the framework around a go or a no-go decision, those are the kinds of things I'm trying to really appreciate is kind of what is the probability that this water system could deliver revenues to our city in the future? We believe we would start off operating it at a loss. There's no tolerance for that, I think, in terms of the state law, or there would, nor would there be, you know, in terms of the Belavista residents, I don't think.
So we have a tough decision to make. We have, we have a really difficult decision. I didn't find any magic bullet solutions in the conversations that I had. So I would ask then of the rest of the council, what are the steps forward here? How do we go about bringing this to a close, one way or the other?
Larry, I guess to clarify one point, I talked with the AML legal staff when we were down there about that particular part of the statute that said we have to balance everything. In reading the statute, the first item is that if you have indebtedness in the form of revenue bonds and other things, you need to incorporate that in your rate. If you have a loan from the city, that's not a revenue bond. So the city can advance cash for the purchase or other things. That's not something that has to be recovered in the rates based on strictly what the law says. So we're looking then at the operating costs and sinking fund for the system so that we have a reserve at the time and the future that it needs major replacement.
But how do you build a reserve on 74 subscribers?
Well, I understand. And so the next question that I ask is, can the city provide the funding to meet the deficit that's there? And they said the answer to that, I was informed, is yes, that we can. We can do it as we would with the street department where we want to fund extra streets. That doesn't come back to us in the form of turnback bunnies when we do road improvements. The water utility is considered a governmental operation, not an enterprise. Doesn't have to be strictly operated as a business, and it may not be in the early years. The objective, obviously, is to make it viable so that it can be self-supporting.
It's going to be really hard because in order to be self-supporting and to be viable, we're going to have to spend millions to upgrade those pipes. And at the AML conference, there was a gentleman who spoke about municipal water systems.
You were there for that.
And a comment was, to be really viable, you need 10,000 meters. Now, many, many of the smaller towns here don't have 10,000 meters. But with 10,000 meters, you then have the opportunity to have a crew that can go out, fix broken mains, that kind of stuff. Other than that, if you're less than 10,000 meters, he said basically it's a crew of one with a shovel over his shoulder, and if you have bad breaks, you're going to have to outsource them every time.
Well, and I think the discussion, if you read the report, really says is that the staff in the street department provide the staff needed in those emergency conditions, situations. And that you have a designated operator, which is the state rule, that's there part-time, not full-time, but there on an as-needed basis to tend to business when it's needed.
And you know, I fall back to the citizen survey we did last year again, inspired police streets are the big three.
And the reason that it's that way is because most of those people who responded to that survey live in an area that's served by the Belavista POA water system, so water is not an issue.
Well, water was number four, but that was POA water. They wanted us to take it over, which isn't going to happen because of the way the POA structured the water. It's the same as golf.
Well, it's eminent domain.
Yeah.
And you would have to pay fair market value for the system, value of the system, and that could, you know, if you're talking about using eminent domain to take over all or a portion of the POA's water system, I can just tell you how that would happen. There would be an appraisal of this system, it's X million dollars, millions of dollars, I don't know how many, I don't want to put a number on it because I don't want to suggest anything. The city has to come up with that money and pay that in cash over to the POA. And then they have a cash influx, they would no longer have a system. We would then take over the system and have the expense of operating it, be X million dollars in debt, and borrow money for the cash influx benefit of Belavista Property Owners Association.
And the people would say, well, have you had water? We already paid for it once, why are we paying for it again? Because that's been an argument for a lot of things that we've already basically paid for through doing.
But I don't, that's just, that's what would have to happen, and a lot of things would happen if there's been no indication.
But I didn't even on the table right now.
You asked, you asked what we need to do. One of the reasons this issue came back up again is because both our water council and I needed to have, we needed to either do one of two things, either get started with a contract, a dealing with Centerton to get this matter, get a price established and move toward closing and get this done. Or find out that the city of Belavista does not want to do that, so that we know that we don't need to proceed down that road. But we were reaching a point in time where with this case coming to an end, Centerton is ready to go, we need to know what to do. So one of the suggestions that came up, we could do this one of two ways. We can incur a lot of expense with Mitchell Williams and have them draft a contract to buy it, and go through all that negotiation, bring it to you, and have you vote it down and say, no, we don't want to buy it, which would not be a wise thing to do, I don't think at this point. Or number two, draft a resolution whereby the council expresses its desire to either proceed or not proceed with the purchase, so that we know to go ahead and put the time, effort and money into this to bring it forward or not. So if you, Steve or any of you decide, were of a mind, I don't want to do this, you could propose a resolution to the council that would say, resolve, the city council is determined to no longer proceed with the purchase of the system, and thereby initiates the provisions of the memorandum of understanding with the city, with Centerson Water to end this. In other words, we pay a little bit of their expense, not related to their litigation, and to initiate that and be done. Basically, you say, we don't want to do this anymore. If that were to be voted down, then we would know that the council did have a majority that wanted to proceed. And then at that point, I think, you know, the mayor would need to direct us to go ahead and get working on a contract to formalize this, set a price, work toward closing and get it going. But I don't think, the mayor can certainly speak to it, I don't think he wanted to incur all that expense if we come to you and say, here's what we're looking at, here's what we're seeing, do we still want to do this? Let's make sure before we, before we incur more expense. And Centerson too, because then we're going to have, that'll be more we would need to reimburse to them.
I have a question. So are you saying if we wanted to proceed that way, that would be on the July ballot, that, or the July meeting is too late for June, or?
I, we could, well, I could draft a resolution and have it on Monday's agenda that would express the willingness of the council to not proceed and to do what I just said. And you could have that on the agenda for next Monday, it's just a resolution. It would not take, it's not a very lengthy resolution. If you all think you need to think about it some more and aren't ready to move that quickly in a week, I could, we could do it in July, but we don't ever have to do that. This is your decision, I did, but that is a way forward. Timing is up to you.
The one piece I'm a little unclear on is, I know if we put the garbage on and don't go forward, we owe Centerton some money, and I'm a little hazy on what that.
It's legal costs, but not including the legal cost they incur in suit with grant.
It specifically excluded any cost related to their lawsuit challenging that. So anything they've incurred to facilitate the sale itself. They're obviously going to start incurring a great deal of that once they get their lawyer and our, and myself and our lawyers are starting to put a contract together, and I mean, that would be a significant amount of added expense we are going to be responsible for. I don't know what Centerton says that dollar figure is today, but it will be higher the longer you wait for the process to go.
But we still don't know what it's going to cost us.
Still, what the, what the.
To purchase the system.
Well, there, there's an estimate of what it's going to cost, but to the dollar, I don't know that we have an exact figure.
Well, and ballpark would work for a starting point. So, okay, say we do, we pass a resolution, you guys get forward, you get all done, and the number you come up with is.
If we, if you pay.
If we do the resolution thing, okay?
And decide you don't want to proceed.
Say, hypothetically, say we do, and you start the process.
Okay.
Okay? And eventually you come up with a dollar amount, a reliable.
Mm-hmm.
And you bring it to us and we say, holy cow, can we stop it at that point?
Well, before the contract is executed, if you could stop it.
Okay.
You could still reverse course, but those incurred expenses to Centerson, we're responsible for.
We would have to pay a little more, but, yeah. Right, right now, the stated, stated cost from them is just under $300,000 for the acquisition and $170,000 for the startup cost that we have to incur to get our ducks in a row to make it operational under our umbrella.
And we've always been around that, and that's not been a change.
Right, and then the first thing Larry wants to do is add the line, so we ought to add that total onto it right off the bat.
Well, you're not going to be paying Centerton for that.
No, I understand, we've paid us, it's still money upfront. But with that, then we should start the process with ANRC. We have a couple of hoops that we need to go through before we get this far. And one of those hoops is the hearing by ANRC to, to grant us a service territory. We will be buying some service territory with the acquisition from Centerton. But I think we want to have the opportunity to expand that throughout the city, even though we won't take advantage of serving everybody in the city that's already served. But we need that service area for, for a couple of reasons. One of those reasons is to provide us with protection, protection against other utilities who may want to also acquire those areas. And it provides us protection to keep them out. And the result of that is, is that it's good for us, and it provides, just like we have a planning area, we need a water service area. And basically, that would represent the current planning boundary plus a little bit more on the west, which is out by where the bypass goes. That area currently is under the umbrella of the Belavista POA. But if Cooper were not to develop that, then the POA couldn't service that, and we would want that opportunity cast in stone, then we would have that opportunity. If we don't take that, take that area as a part of our service area, and Cooper sells the land to non-POA development, POA can't service it with their water system, and now you're looking at adjacent communities that can service that, and I think we want to protect ourselves.
Well, but you're not getting, getting full, full protection based on what Steve's saying because we can't get the loans to protect us on the other side, plus.
Water service area has nothing to do with your water system.
No, I understand, but there's, there's that other piece of protection that we won't have.
We, and I, and basically, my point a couple of meetings ago is there's no point in stalling the decision because we will not be able to acquire the same protection Centerton has. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that we are at risk by doing it or buying the water system. It means that we may be subject to litigation, but I, I guess I think reasonably that we would have the rights to preserve that and not have to give some of it up.
I would also mention to you that if we're going to suddenly turn around, get a loan, and increase the size of those pipes, then you're going to have to cut something else off the capital list. The one that's probably the closest in dollar amounts is the new fire station number three.
Well, that or the tower, the training tower. I don't know that we need to take it off the list. I think that the list currently includes projects that we are unable to afford.
That's right, so you'd have to go for a bond, and I can't afford any of the, of the two fire projects that would have to be in the bond. So now you're going to replace one of those with putting pipes in the ground. one of those with putting pipes in the ground or a water system. That's what it comes down to.
I think, I think the water system is the key to your providing funding for projects that we have slated already.
How's it going to help New York?
With no customers. How long we have to wait? My, my thing is always bad. How long we got to carry it? How long we got to carry it? Got to carry it for 10 years, then all of a sudden, then change the navigation in 10 years?
No.
As you, we're paying it every year.
I don't know that there is a guarantee of how fast you're going to turn it around in terms of generating.
You have to at least finish the freeway first. And you have to hope they start building to make it attractive for somebody to go build out there, so we can run the water through that. How much is the cost to run water from here to there? Purchase all that right away for a handful of businesses early on. You look at 49 from State Line at the Joplin. That's been there 30-plus years. How much is on that road? You look at Fayetteville south to 40.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine going that way. Okay? How much is on that road after 25 years?
Where's 49?
Forty-nine. We were just on it.
By 49?
Yeah!
Oh, okay.
Anyhow.
All right. I wasn't sure.
You got, you got 25, 30 years this way. How much is on that, from the State Line to Joplin? Couple of gas stations?
At the interchangers.
How much is on 49 from Fayetteville to Fort Smith? That's 25 years. Okay? And that road is done. Our road isn't done.
I don't think we're talking about the same. I don't think we're talking.
No, but you, but you're talking about building, you're talking about building alongside the road.
It's not apples to apples.
Well, may not be, but you're talking about building alongside the road.
And I don't even know where I am on this right now, but that's not apples to apples. This is, I think this is a totally different situation out here. If you're looking at this infill commercial development that generates.
Right. And how long will it take? That's what we're wondering. Look at the ticket again, and how long can we wait?
I don't know.
I think we have more pressing priorities myself.
Larry, I always wondered, when you're talking about the service area, were you talking about the whole city of Belavista?
Yes.
So would the POA say, well, wait a minute, we're already serving that? I mean, can you just have a service area or somebody else?
Well, currently, their service area encompasses the incorporated area that we originally started with.
Yeah.
Okay? But they can't service that whole area anyway, but that's what their service area shows.
Yeah.
And so we can't. We don't intend.
I thought that's what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's true. The maps are, the maps will be overlapping.
Yeah.
But the understanding, obviously, is that we don't want to go and service lands that they can service now. We want to service lands they can't service.
Well, Jason, I, I'd be, if you could draft up the resolution clearly, then I'd be inclined to present that next week.
Do we have to do it next week?
No. But they're breaking more costs as you sit around thinking about it. We don't have to.
I don't know that there are more costs, I think, than the mayor's talked about, the fact that you're going to spend over a million dollars to make the system viable in, in Belavista area on the west side.
Well, I was talking cost from the project. I mean, as we go forward and start to put a contract together, their lawyers are going to be charging it.
You can do both things. You can go ahead and have to do a resolution that expresses a desire to not proceed, put that on the agenda. You can debate it, table it in the month, and debate it again the next month, or vote on it immediately. You can always table it if you need more time to think about it. You don't have to necessarily vote first time it's on the agenda. You always have that option.
Do we have an inventory of the potential commercial properties that already have two-ton water going in front of them, but it's not big enough? That would be a really important piece of this puzzle. And I'm not talking about things out at the interchains. I'm talking about the 20 acres next to the, next to the street department, other parcels along to 79, because those are likely going to be commercial quicker if they had water.
City has not taken the initiative to get interested in that.
Well, actually, yeah. We had Travis speak to Tom Fredericks, who's got the 20-plus. The next 63 acres that's for sale, and the one across the street as well. We know what plans are. It's just a lot of selling.
Well, yeah, but having viable water service makes a huge difference to selling the land, plus the 20 acres next to the street department on Rogers Road.
That 20 acres next to the street department already has water.
Yeah, but you said it's not big. We, the whole part of this is the line isn't big enough to do anything.
It depends what you put in there.
Right.
It has water, but it doesn't have water in the sense of being able to meet fire code requirements is what the bill is. That's the bottom line. Most of the buildings, commercial buildings, you get over a certain square.
Well, it's 12,000 square feet. You can do an awful lot of commercial under 12,000 square feet.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. And we can provide water service for that.
I just don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot and turn down all that potential commercial development on these parcels I've just mentioned, which would bring in tax-dollar revenue going all through the future.
Understanding it's in Grab.
What? No, I'm not, I'm not talking about parcels in Grab. I'm talking about parcels in Belavista.
Frederick signs in Grab. Isn't Frederick's land in Grab?
It is, but it doesn't have to always be in Grab.
That's right.
Do you think they will give it up?
What? They don't, if there's a voluntary annexation, they don't have a choice.
I understand that. But you think somebody's going to voluntarily give it up because they went running to Grab in the first place?
Well, I think what they're referencing is Act 779. That says is that if, say, for example, the city of Belavista completed this deal and had the water system, which currently extends in the Grab, and Grab was no longer an issue here, that's a F, but let's just say that, that weren't going to provide water. But the land that potentially could be developed is in the city of Grab. But the city of Belavista had adopted an ordinance that said, we do not extend new meters outside of the city. Sorry, that's, we're going to exercise the right that we have to prioritize city customers and deeds and pressure and all that sort of stuff. So someone who would want to develop that in Grab could send a notice to Grab and say, we're going to, pursuant to this act, we repress you to provide water service and whatever other service they want. And then they have a certain period of time to respond. If Grab is unable to do that, because obviously they would, then that person could voluntarily de-annex from Grab and add it to Belavista.
And I understand it. I understand how that works. I do. I was here when we annexed most of it. I understand that. But we'll do it.
If it's the only way they can do it.
Eventually. Okay. And then what about sewer? There isn't any. There won't be.
There's sewer up to the street department.
That's it. That's all the farther it's going, probably.
I understand that.
Can't move it any further.
No.
They're not going to pass it.
Get all, get a full debate Monday night, and, and, you know, get the resolution.
Okay. Linda, the next two are yours. Fire and fireworks dates, playground equipment?
Yes, some, um, some are kind of snuck up on me. I had previously been asked by a couple of residents if we could shorten the time that we allow fireworks.
You've already done what? You realize that?
I'm just doing that upon a request.
Okay.
And my concern about fireworks dates is, I don't know that the dates is the problem. I think the enforcement is the problem, and I don't know how we enforce it. And I would ask Chief Graves about that. This weekend in Metfield, on Saturday and Sunday, there were multiple loud noises, which I don't think were gunshots. I think they were fireworks already. And how do we enforce fireworks? Do you have to call and say, hey, here's the address, come right out? So.
Pretty much, because you don't know yourself.
What are the dates now?
The dates are July.
Third, fourth, and fifth, 6:00 PM to midnight.
You got it. And also on New Year's Eve, December 31st, from 6:00 PM through 1:00 AM on January 1st.
And nobody pays any attention. Most people pay that, don't pay.
What we did actually, you know, since you were since, before, was it 10-day limit?
Yeah, it was 10 days, state code.
So I'm not bringing this up at my behest. If it was up to me, we would outlaw fireworks. But two residents asked me to bring it up, so that's what I'm doing. And I think no matter what we do, you can't enforce it.
Oh.
Really.
Sure you can.
Practically.
You absolutely can. You have a witness that said, I saw them out shooting firecrackers on July the 7th. And they call the police, and the police go out there, and there's the remnants of the firecrackers, and they take your report. They go knock on a door, and they'll investigate it, and they can determine what's going on, issue somebody a citation. They absolutely can do that. I don't know, I mean, it's a matter of enforcement priority on July, you know, if it's July the 4th, and it's 12:05, after, it's five minutes after midnight, you know, that, there's going to be priorities for enforcement. I mean, that's, Chief, we need to answer that question in terms of enforcement policy or, you know, how they view that.
And I think it's more a question of, you sure hear it, but you haven't got the foggiest idea what address it's coming from.
Well, that's, that is difficult if you don't know what street.
Unless you happen to be standing there.
Now, now what could, again, I'm not, I'm not going to tell the police how to do this. They know how to do their job. But if you live on such and such street, say, I'm hearing all kinds of fireworks out here, they could bring a car, roll the window down, listen, see if they track someone down where it's coming from. They, they're good at doing stuff like that. They investigate all that stuff, and they could root it out. Just, I mean, the ordinance is, is set. It's, it's going to be, you know, it takes three readings, and, you know, you could.
I understand.
You could have an emergency ordinance on the meeting Monday, wait three readings, adopt emergency calls, and change, that's what you have to do Monday night, or change this and that.
I understand. I realize I am tardy, and I promised somebody I would bring it up, and summer just happened.
Okay. Playground.
Oh, okay. Matt was here and spoke to us at, I guess it was the last meeting, about his playground equipment issue. And I met with him a couple times and talked with him. And what he's basically suggesting we do is the exact same thing I did in 2016, was to propose an ordinance that says, if you can't put it in the backyard because of the slope of the property, you put it in the front yard. And that was an ordinance that was turned down by council in 2016. My concern about bringing something forward again, granted this is a different council, is, understand, we can't pay attention to what the ACC does. But as of January of last year, they will not allow any front yard playground equipment. As of January, I think I have the date of the office, 2021, all existing playground equipment in front yards needs to be removed from the village. Doesn't matter how long it's been there, there's this three-year notice, and as of that date, everything has to go away.
It isn't just playground.
Well, I know, there, this particular thing, there's all sorts of other things.
Yes.
So anything in the front yards, almost, has got to go away. So my concern about bringing any ordinance forward to help Matt out and other people in his situation is that, do we want to be in a position of pressing an ordinance that's distinctly in violation of the ACC regulation and put the people in a position of, well, the city said it was okay? Because I think that puts us in a bad spot.
Sounds like chickens. Look, Matt.
Yes, it does.
Several years ago, and I'll repeat this for anybody who wants to listen, because it comes up all the time. And in fact, on our webpage, we've got these frequently asked questions, and this is one. City says I can do something. The ACC says I can't. What do I do? All this sort of stuff. The ACC enforces private covenants.
Correct.
Those are basically, in their nature, private contractual agreements that you are a party to by buying a lot in this Belavista village.
Correct.
Not just because you live in the city of Belavista. Only those that are subject to the covenants that are part of the Belavista POA. So those are private covenants. So you contract away your rights to do things which you otherwise the law would allow you to do in order to live in this various, this particular community with a particular higher set of rules, I guess you could say it that way. So there are lots of things that don't violate ordinance, that violates POA covenants. We don't say anything in city ordinance about what the color of someone's house can be. We say nothing. You want to paint your house fuchsia, you're not going to have any problem with the city.
Right.
But, but those people, the two doors down, are going to knock on your door, and if you don't eventually change it, they're going to sue you. So what happened here a few years ago, the city was approached because people wanted to have hot chickens. They wanted to have a few chickens, have some eggs, and this is a very popular thing, still is. I'm not going to talk to the, to the wisdom of any of that. In any event, the city council at the time had a rule with no chickens. The city council changed the ordinance and said, okay, we'll let you have a certain limited number of chickens, no roosters. You won't violate city ordinance by doing that. We adopted that, and we had some people immediately get chickens, including former members of the city council, and the ACC promptly filed a lawsuit against them and shut it down because they violated covenants. So what invariably happens is people think, I'll go to the city and make it legal to do it.
Right.
Where they, they're just setting themselves up for a private lawsuit rather than a ticket from us.
So here's another part to that as well. So the ACC, I really got with what was being proposed last year. They, that, and they discussed what they were going to do, and they sent out notices through, I think about four different means, to the residents of the Belavista POA. So, and again, it isn't just playground equipment. It's sheds, it's structures of any kind. I would just say the front yard before, in front of the front plant or whatever.
Yeah.
It also states RVs or travel trailers or anything like that. If it's a foot, if the foot or two foot shows above a fence, now they're going to have to be completely screened, beginning in 2021.
Twenty twenty.
I thought it was 2020, 2020, maybe it's 2021.
I think.
But anyways, they haven't said that. So anyone that had playground, whatever it is, a structure in the front yard, prior to the notice that they sent out last year, they're grandfathered in until January of 2021. However, if you have erected something after the date of the notification, and they know about it, they will require that you move it immediately.
Immediately. Correct.
So, and but to your point, we go craft something, let's just say we pass it, and the city says, hey, it's okay, you know, for you to do this, or that's what they think. And then the ACC comes back, gets rid of it, and they're like, hey, you told me I could do this.
And, and I discussed that exactly with him, and I think it puts us in a bad spot.
Well, he said, the last one he appeared, he said, he wanted to do this, then he'd deal with him later, I think is what he said. I don't know what he.
Maybe I don't think they had issued a letter at that point. I think it was two weeks ago.
Well, the letter from the POA was January of 2018.
That was last, that was last year.
Yeah, last year.
Yeah. They, they actually, it wasn't just a letter. I mean, they put it in, I think, the Marvilles, they put it in magazines.
I don't get a lot of them.
I'm just saying, they put it in, they did, they announced it like four different.
Yeah, they had, they had to meet certain publication requirements to.
And they're getting ready to do it again. I wouldn't, I just, I just wouldn't ask a question about it, just to find out what the particulars were. And they're getting ready to do another round of the fall. Send notification, just like they did last year.
So Linda, your point is you don't want to do it.
My point is, I, I sympathize with Matt, but I don't think personally that I should, we should be passing ordinances that we know are in conflict with the Belavista village requirements, because I think it puts us in a really bad spot.
I'm not sure there's a big good ordinance anyway.
Well, let me.
Well, apart from the rest of that.
Let me just add this as well, because we have parts of the city that are not subject to the POA.
I understand. I totally understand.
That would be the only rule in those areas where there's not other, some other private covenant that.
I understand.
But if, of course, if there's no covenant restriction on it, I don't think the county, or we have, we don't have anybody, well, I guess we would, I guess, or do. So there are plates, a limited number of places in Belavista that are subject to those covenants.
Thanks. So, okay. Any other conversation on that? All right. Anybody else got anything in business? Want to tell us about North Carolina and how wonderful it is?
No. It was great.
No, it was great. How was the food?
Outstanding.
Was it?
Oh, yeah.
Restaurants, yeah. All right. Thank you. We'll see you later.
Thank you.